Good evening, everybody. Call me in order. The Tom Diten Planning Board regularly meeting Wednesday, December 7th, 2022 at 6:00 P. M. Please be advised this is a public meeting being video and audio recorded for cable broadcast. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Okay, I'd like to confirm the next meeting date and finalize the 2023 schedule. Is that here in this packet? I don't remember seeing that.
There you go.
Yes, it should be right after the agenda.
It's not the one you set down. That's okay. Awesome. All right, so before you, we have the meeting schedule for next year, starting with the first meeting on the 4th of January. And we have two meetings in December. I'll have to do something about that again, eh?
No. Oh, yeah, next year, yeah.
For next year. You want to do something about it now?
No.
Okay, we can handle it later.
I might not be here next year.
Okay, and what I wanted to discuss, like, on the planet? Okay, all right, yeah, same here. So anyway, so I proposed to the group at some point, I said, hey, you guys were considering meeting later instead of 6:00 or 7:00? Kind of wanted to throw that out to see. I've talked to some of you individually and got your opinions, but I don't know what your thoughts are on that. If you'd rather keep it 6:00, I'm good with that. The only reason I mentioned 7:00 is it would make things a little easier for folks to get here, but I'm kind of leaving it out there. So what do you think?
What folks you talking about?
Me and this guy.
Okay.
Okay.
Gotcha.
I mean, if that's, if that will help you guys find it, not.
But if it's gonna be, if it's gonna be a burden for some people, because it's an hour later, then I won't do it.
No, I kind of like it because I can have dinner with my wife.
Yeah, I.
That would be nice.
I usually leave work, I run home, I grab a granola bar and I come here.
Okay. So I'll make a motion after the 1st of the year, starting with the January 4th meeting, that the planning board changes its starting time to 7:00 P. M.
Second.
Okay, motion in the second. Any further discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's five ayes. So starting next year, 2023, with the meeting on the 4th of January, we will be meeting starting at 7:00 P. M. Entertained a motion to approve the schedule as shown here.
I'll make that motion.
Got a motion?
Second.
Motion in the second. Any discussion before we take it to a vote? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Kerry. All right, so on to the business items for this evening. Agenda item 4A1 is a Form A application for Antonio Almeida at Zira Williams Street, map 21, lot 22. Is anybody here tonight to present on that?
Lee Castigny from Long Built Homes is the applicant. The, as you may recall, the plan for the primary subdivision is here for endorsement as well. And this was the parcel that Mr. Almeida bought from the town several years ago that we had discussed, including in the Hunter's Hill project, annexing a portion of it to the Hunter's Hill project, so that we could do that through road, extending Miranda Way, and make a circular road pattern through the development. And this is to sever that parcel from, from the existing parcel, to sever the east, easterly portion, so that it can be annexed to the Hunter's Hill project.
Okay. Yeah, I read this. So that parcel to the left, that's being left, the remaining part of the parcel, it says it's a non-buildable lot and it's on a undeveloped, non-publicway road. Is that, is there an actual road there or is it just a?
You know, physically, I actually don't know. I know that there's, it not being a public way and not knowing the condition of the road, it's certainly, we're not going to make any claims for it to be buildable at this point in time.
Right.
So whatever, any, any claims that he may make as to its buildability, he'd have to bring up, you know, separately with, with you.
Understood, yeah.
Which I don't think he has any intention to. I'm not really sure. I think he bought the parcel just because it was available and it was, its proximity to the, to the Hunter's Hill project.
Okay.
And as it turned out, it was rather fortuitous with his foresight that it served a very useful purpose in.
Okay.
Pretty much salvaging the project.
Yeah, that worked out.
Does he not have any access from Hunter's Hill into this?
No. No.
Yeah, because that'd be behind people's parcels.
None, none at all. No.
There's no, there's no, oh, there's a buffer there between, no, there isn't, never mind. On that section of it, there is no, nothing separating any of that, really. You'd have to enter it from the, from the west.
And it won't have anything to do with the homeowners association, right?
The remaining parcel?
Well, the, this particular lot.
Yeah, the remaining parcel.
Yeah.
No, no. It won't have anything to do with Hunter's Hill whatsoever. That'll be, the, the project itself will be conveyed to an enti, it won't be Long Built Homes, but it'll be an entity owned by Long Built Homes, just as an ownership entity for the project. That, the remainder of that parcel will still be owned by Mr. Almeida. Have nothing, nothing to do with the project whatsoever.
There is a little sliver here from Miranda Way.
Yeah, it's south, though.
Into Antonio Almeida's property.
No.
No, that sliver you're talking about is, it's south of the property.
No, that enters the open space in the project.
Yeah.
The, the openings between the lots?
Yes.
Yeah, one of them goes into the drainage basin on the open space parcel.
That's what it is, an easement for the drainage.
Correct, correct. But that's, that's on the open space parcel in Hunter's Hill, not, not part of that parcel.
It still is land, and that's why I question.
Yeah, yeah.
He just doesn't seem to be the type of person that would buy land just to keep there.
It, it did, when we, we didn't even know he owned it. Evan, Evan came across it totally mistakenly, and when he did, we were kind of floored, to be honest with you. It was like, what on earth did you buy that for? No, no real explanation, just random purchase. I don't know.
Nothing I can say.
Yeah.
It is what it is.
Me either.
Okay, well, any other, anything else, Joe? Any other concerns?
No, I have no other questions.
Woody?
No.
Chris? Dan? No. Okay. No, we, no concerns here. This looks pretty straightforward, cut and dry.
Yeah.
I'm glad this worked out, as it is working out, because this is definitely making the project, keeping the project moving along, so I'm glad.
Yeah.
Glad for that. So hearing no other concerns from the, from the board members here, entertain a motion to approve this Form A application for Tony Almeida, Zira Williams Street, map 21, lot 22.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion before we take it to a vote? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Five ayes, three ayes. Motion carries. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thanks very much. Appreciate it.
Good night. Thank you.
Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
All right, so next item? Nope, nope. Standby. All right, so this is, this is for this Form A. Got it, okay. Because we still have the other stuff to sign out to. Hey, Dan, wait till you get to the rest of the drawings.
Couldn't come up with the money to.
He's not. He had to come up with the money. He's over cashier's check. No cash. Can I pull up 30 today? You gotta get one of those thimble things, the paper, the paper thing to put in. We used to do paper timesheets at work, and later it was always like.
Because the, the subdivision, the pensional subdivision may have to turn in 275. They have 250 to the front.
Yeah.
Even if he has.
And it lasts a really long time on a hang.
Water. It's not going to be connected now.
Mr. B. All right, so on to the next agenda item, 4A2. It's a site plan review for Local 876 Realty LLC at 210 Williams Street, map 2, lot 126. Sir? Mr. Arujo, how you doing?
David Arujo, representing the Local 876 Realty Trust.
Okay.
So I submitted architectural drawings, some engineering drawings, to the planning board office several weeks ago. Hopefully you guys got an opportunity to look through that. And also a letter addressed to the chairman and the board in regards to the minor site plan review that we're seeking and relief for 1.48 parking spots. Quick history on the, on the, on the, on the project. We bought the, the piece of property back September the 16th of last year. I thought that it would be a, a quick project, but as we discussed earlier, between, you know, help and everybody's schedule and architects and engineers being so busy, it's taking considerable time to get all of the required information to you guys. So again, I don't know if you've had an opportunity to, to go over the letter, to, to read it, if you've, you know, for the, for the variance that we're seeking. The engineering piece of it, I think, kind of shows you what we're, we're looking at there, and the architected's obviously give you a, a good idea of what we're planning to do with the piece of property. I do have some conceptual landscape drawings that I picked up today. We've contracted with a landscape architect several months ago. I mean, obviously, she's been busy, and told I had a meeting tonight, and, you know, she put together this so that we can review this today. It gives you an idea of between the engineering and the architected's and the landscaping, gives you a feel for what the piece of property will look like all said and done. I've met with the building inspector, you know, prior to coming before you tonight, just to make sure that he was, you know, happy with the design, with the engineering. He's met with the engineers. Fire questions at me. Talk to me.
I have one question for you. So just a point of clarity.
Yep.
Your, your waiver shouldn't have been written for 1.48 spots, it should be written for two spots. Letter, it says here, for the purposes of computing parking requirements of different uses, the number of spaces required shall be the largest whole number obtained after increasing all fractions upwards, so you round up.
So even though it was 0.48, you would round up?
No.
And really, the 0.48 is probably a little higher, if you look at the, at the dimensions of the building, I believe the architect put on there, I, I, I always look at it as
296.
82 by 28, because it keeps the numbers simple, you know? But it is a little less than 82, I believe. So that number of 1.48 would be a little less. Is it dramatic? It is not. But, you know, just to.
Well, if the actual dimensions, actual square footage is not 2296, what is it?
Again, I want to say that it is, it's 83.75 times 28. I want to say it's 2345.
So it's more?
No, it's actually, I think I did that right.
What are the dimensions they got calculated?
I want to say it was 80, I'm sorry, 81.
81.
Excuse me, I, I made a mistake.
Yep.
81.75.
I don't like to do math on my feet either.
Times 28. Yeah, so it's 228, 2,289.
It's, it's a large.
Divide that by the 200.
2289.
You're looking at.
200.
11. what, 45, rather than?
Right, but you still round up to the nearest whole number.
Yeah, I always thought that after 0.50, you would round up, rather than before you reached that.
Right, well, that's, that's standard math, but according to 3120 of the.
Yeah, okay.
It says round up to the nearest whole number, because you can't have half a spot. But my point is.
No, I understand.
Your requirement is 12 spots, not 11.48.
Yep.
Just being difficult. But, so my question to you is.
And I can revise that letter.
That's fine. Don't worry about it. The, the point really is, 0.4 of a spot is a spot. So either way you look at this, it's going to be two spots that you're asking a waiver for. But my question to you is, as I look at the landscaping here, and I did look at, you know, I did look through the drawing you did provide, and I'm just, I'm curious why you can't fit two spots around the corner here. I'm just wondering why. If we're going to talk about, you know, if we talk about a waiver to waive two spots, I'd like to know that there's a good reason why you can't put the two spots right where you pull in. I don't, I don't understand. Is there a safety concern? Is there a structure in the way?
There is not a safety concern, but I was trying to, I was trying to ask for a minor site plan.
Okay.
Rather than a major, because obviously that gets into a whole big blown process that I don't think that this piece of property and the business really warrants a, a major site plan review, as I pointed out in my letter, about the operation of the business, you know, Monday through Friday.
I understand, but I don't think a major takes over until 20, right?
I believe it's after 10.
It's after 10.
Okay, I misread that. That's why, that's why you're waiving the 10.
Correct.
Okay, that's why you're waiving the, the additional after the 10.
That's why I'm asking.
My apologies.
No, not a problem. So, you know, again, the way I think the topography of that lot and what we're proposing, that it would, you know, everything would, would drain basically to the impervious, to the pervious material in the back of the property, pretty much the way it goes now. And again, I don't, I don't see a, a need for a major site plan review, because I don't need all those parking spots. I mean, there's, there's basically three people, and we're not all at that facility all day, Monday through Friday, as I pointed out in my letter, and, and one day a month, we have an executive board meeting that consists of seven people. So the 10 is more than sufficient.
Okay.
You know, it, it, as I pointed out in my letter, you know, the, the business has changed since COVID has come in. You know, there's a lot of, there's a lot less foot traffic. It's very, very minimal. You know, a lot of the business is done, payments are done online, a lot of contact by phone. Again, we get the occasional retiree that comes in, fills out paperwork for their retirement, and they're there probably, you know, maybe an hour, hour and a half tops, but it's usually a husband and wife. So, you know, to add two people to two people who are already in the office is, you know, there's, there's just not a lot of, a lot of busyness, you know?
Okay, understood. That's the only question I had.
I honestly think, I'll make a motion to approve it, because it's really not, that that's a mental.
We have to make a motion to accept the proposal here, right, for the review?
If you're going to move forward with that.
Yes, we're not, we're not approving the.
If, if you're going to move forward with that, I think we got to see if the other board members have any questions first and then.
Yeah, so we're not, we're not approving the site plan right now. We're going to have somebody, we're going to have the peer engineer review this.
Oh, I thought we had that done already.
No, you have to, first, you're going to determine if you're going to have a peer review done, because it's a minor.
Okay.
And so first, you want to see if you want to have that done. And then you, as a board, will discuss if you want to move forward with that, or if you're satisfied with what he's presented. And also, the rest of the board members may have some questions.
Okay.
Mr. Arujo.
Peer review, can we take the engineering plan that we did with Fitzgerald and Gilbert as the peer review, if you will? I mean, if there's something on there that you guys see, obviously, you know that, that, that company, we work with them all the time. You know, I'm sure that if anything sticks out, whether it's today or tomorrow or whenever it might be, we'll make the accommodation. But again, you guys have to decide that, just a, an ask on my part.
Woody, what's, what are your thoughts here?
My thoughts are, it would be nice to have a union building in our town. It's on a nice piece of road, it's going to get a lot of visibility. I don't have a problem waiving the two parking spots, but I do have a problem with the peer review. I don't see the issue. I understood your letter. The plans are nice, the drawing is very nice. But us granting a waiver for parking, right, which I don't see a problem, because I know what's going to happen there, and I take your word for it, but other people will notice, and they'll say, well, you gave those people a waiver for those two parking.
I understand totally. Yep. I got you.
And my very first meeting at, on the planning board, I don't know how many years ago, seven or eight years ago, we got burned by a business in town, because they came in and they should have got a full site plan review, and they got a minor, and they came back to burn us more than once. But it's a much larger business, and I was new, and I just went along with what was going on, but today, you know, I've been here long enough to see when developers or anyone comes before us, if we granted a waiver for, I don't care what it is, they know when and why and where, right? And, and these guys will tell you, I, I very rarely vote in favor of a waiver, but I, I'll give a waiver for two parking spots. And that's all I have to say on that.
All right, thank you. Mr. Cunha.
Nothing further here.
No concerns?
It does sound like, how much Kerry said, we have the option of not requesting the peer review.
Right, yeah.
Are there any guidelines that we need to follow in terms of our decision-making on that point, or?
Well, we either, based on the presentation this evening, and looking at the drawings and know, knowing all the rules and regs and anything else, make an educated decision that a third party does not have to review this. That's, that's the extent of it.
Because it's a minor.
Because it's a minor.
Well, first, you determine if you're going to accept his request.
Keeps it a minor.
To keep it a minor.
Mm-hmm.
And then, because a lot of times when you have a minor, someone will come in with a sketch or something. He's gone above and beyond with a minor, creating, coming in with an architectural plan or a, a site plan. But sometimes a minor will come in with a handwritten plan, and a lot of times you don't have a peer review done on that. So that's why you will be making a determination, A, for his request to have it as a minor, and then you'll be making a determination of whether you want the peer review done or not.
Okay. Tell us, man, a question.
Okay. All right, so we have two things to decide. First is accepting this as a minor, which means you accept the waiver, letter request to say that it's only 10 spots required. So discuss that first, so entertain a motion to determine that this is a, that this is a minor site plan.
So move.
Second.
Okay. Motion in the second. Any questions on that discussion before we take it to a vote? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's five ayes, so motion carries, so it's a minor. Second matter is the peer review. Kind of here in two ways here. Does somebody want to make a motion to not require?
I'll make that motion.
Aye.
I feel pretty comfortable with the plans that he's drawn.
So we got a motion on the table to not require peer review. Is there a second?
A second.
So motion in the second. Any discussion? I think you've kind of made your opinion known.
Yeah.
Okay. I'm, I'm, I, hearing Mrs. Easterday talk about mine aside plans and I would typically handle them, I feel comfortable, because we do have a lot more here than we normally do. So I, I'm not, I'm not concerned, but any, any other discussion before we take it to vote? Okay, all in favor of not requiring a peer review? Vote aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. What was your vote?
Aye.
So three ayes?
Abstain.
Abstain. Okay, we got four ayes and abstention.
Again, as I stated before, if you guys see something that sticks out at you.
Mm-hmm.
Speak up.
Okay.
You know?
I know, I, I didn't have any concerns, I just had questions about this box, but.
Yeah.
I mean, even the topography of the land.
Want me to, do you want me to change that and initial it?
I don't think it's, I don't think it's necessary. Do you think it's necessary?
I think so.
I think if anybody was doing anything.
I can reflect on the minutes of the decision.
Yeah. We had a discussion about, it's rounds up, it rounds up. I just, that immediately jumped out at me. Matter of fact, it's in the packet tonight that we, we're emailing sent back and just references that. But I think, I think we're good.
So when I do the, the minutes and the decision, I'll reflect that.
The drainage.
In that, see if it's all set on that.
Is it a, is it a 28?
Yes, I know.
Not with a minor.
Not with a minor.
No, I just have to write it up and make sure, send it to council, make sure it's all set, and then I'll have it time stamped, and then I'll.
Let me know.
I'll email it to you, since I have your legit email.
We're the only one.
Yeah.
Things don't go right, I like to point.
Yeah, no, that's, that's.
You didn't get that one either?
But no, but look at this, the topography that's here.
Oh, another individual?
The numbers just gradually keep going back down to 100s. You're looking at five-foot difference between here and.
When you weren't the architectural, you took those.
It's a pretty substantial.
I have.
Okay, let's go, let's go.
What we did for the other one was.
No, good.
I think that was the only one. And the only one.
Wait.
Rent a car.
Yeah.
You know, take all that stuff, whatever you need.
Yeah, I do need to keep one.
Yeah, no, that's fine. Like I said, if you don't, you needed to keep that one, that's fine, but, or if you need one, I'll get you one.
Okay.
Okay.
Or actually, just have them email it to me.
Okay. You want if I.
Electronic.
Yeah, yeah.
That's the best way.
I can do that. I had it.
Perfect, just email it to me.
That was the.
Then I'll have to print it.
Yeah, right, exactly.
Save paper.
Good night, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Have a good night, Dave.
Wait a minute. So we did a motion to determine it's a minor, we did a motion not to require a peer review. So we did a motion to determine it's a minor, we did a motion not to require a peer review, are we doing a motion to approve?
I made that motion, but nobody wanted it.
I think that would be a good idea.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I'm seconding it.
Okay, there you go.
Motion of the second, alright, motion of the second, uh, before we take it to a final vote, uh, any further discussion?
You motioned?
Joe did.
Joe motioned, and Woody seconded. Uh, and you're hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is it five ayes? Five ayes.
Five ayes.
Alright, now, you're good.
Now we're all set.
Okay, good, excellent. Not until then. Alright, good, so, thank you, so we're off to business item four B, public hearings. Uh, this is, uh, a hearing that was continued from last week, and do I have to make a reference to the Mullen rule?
Yes, you do.
Okay. For the Mullen, Mullen rule, I was not present. You're not present either, right?
I was not, but I read the minutes of the meeting.
Okay, yeah, I was not present, and neither was Robert Woods, uh, but we both are up to speed, having reviewed the minutes for the meeting, so... That being said, I entertain a motion to continue the public me, public hearing for Kenneth and Kim Barabee for the definitive subdivision plan sixteen twenty-four, Old Williams Street, map twenty-one, block thirty-two dash one. Sir, when you're ready, the floor is yours.
He's been there longer.
Take me, why don't we get down here?
Okay, Bob, Bob Barabee, pro light engineering, representing my brother, Kenneth, who's in the audience, and his wife, Kim. They own the piece of property, when we were here last time, all we really discussed was the peer review. And, uh, that has taken place now, we got comments yesterday afternoon from the consultant. So I put a, I put the responses together, I went through the plan that was submitted earlier, made a couple of minor changes on them, based on the responses from the consultant. And if you want, I could go through them, it was a, the review was a lot of pages, about ten pages, but most of the comments were just not applicable, or they were part of waivers that we had requested as part of this subdivision. But I can go through them with you, I got some extra copies of my responses, if you need them.
I, I think that's a good idea, because two of them were not here, if you could...
Yeah, that'd be good, please. Yep. Yep, guys coming down there?
They left you guys to change the copies of the plate, you want that also?
Joe?
Ten, three, with the money.
You don't have one, you have one, right?
This is mine, you have one as well?
I'm, I'm okay.
That's where you're looking at ours, sir, number seven. Did that go out, Kerry?
Which one?
This, this one here, electronically.
The one I just gave you?
Yeah, yeah.
Is not on there yet, no.
Oh, okay, okay, that's why.
No, he just presented, he just brought him in tonight.
Oh, okay, I got you now, okay. Okay. Alright, so you're... Okay, you're subdividing, you're, you're breaking off parcel two, got it, in lieu of making a subdivision, that's right.
Yeah, we went to zoning, and asked to, this is one large parcel, about a little over six acres of land, with excess frontage, about three hundred fifty, a little over three hundred fifty-five feet of frontage.
Got it, okay.
So, we went to zoning, this was a subdivision, but then it expired, and now there's a moratorium on water, so that's, that would be on hold. So we ended up going to zoning, to see if we could create a conforming lot with two hundred fifty feet of frontage, and over an acre of land, for the existing dwelling that's on the piece of property. And then with the remaining land, which has a hundred and five point six zero feet of frontage, but over five acres of land, we wanted to see if we could build a single-family dwelling on that lot. So we presented that to zoning, and they granted it with conditions. So on this plan, part of the variance decision, there's a whole paragraph of what can be done mainly on that second parcel, parcel two, because parcel one conforms.
Got it.
So, that was submitted to the consultant, and then they came back, like I said, with their comments, the comments were dated yesterday, and they went through them, so I can go through each one, they responded three different ways. One was N D Y, which means not determined yet, and most of those responses dealt with the waivers that we requested. I think they're kinda leaving that in the board's hands, to grant the waivers or not.
Okay.
And then the yes would be that it met the standards, and then the end would be, no, it did not. So if we look at, I don't know if, does everybody have a copy of the comments from the consultant?
They should be in your packet.
They're in the packet, yeah, our packet. Yep, stand by.
So my response letter was dated today, and that's what I just passed in. I can go through each one, and I can do it fairly quickly.
Please do.
Yeah, go for it.
Okay, so on the first page, the first N D Y is a waiver request, is a waiver request. The plan that I drew is at a scale of one inch equals fifty, as opposed to one and forty. The reason why is because I can get the whole parcel on, and the abutters, show the wetlands off the property, and get the roads. So I asked for the waiver from forty foot scale to a fifty foot scale. On the second page, item C, they asked for my stamp and my surveyor's stamp on the plan. So the plan that I submitted today has both my registered land surveyor's stamp and my P E stamp on it. Item number G, at the bottom of that page two, it talks about the width and the grades of the street. They weren't showing the plan, so I did, we did the topo previously, so I did put the existing grades on Old Williams Street on this plan. None of that is changing. So I show that on there, and I also showed the approximate width of the actual paved portion of the road, Old Williams, at both ends of the property. This is a variable width road, it's bounded mostly by stone walls, the pavement, this isn't like a brand-new road, so the width varies from twenty-three feet on the western end, to twenty-two feet on the eastern end, but it's, that's pretty much the standard size of that paved portion of that roadway. On page three, item number I, it talks about the, uh, location of the buildings, stone walls, wooded areas, thick brush, rock ridges, outcrops, on the plan, also the existence of large trees. Now, I didn't ask for that waiver originally, I should have, but that, I think, is more important if we're actually constructing a road as part of the subdivision. That way we can see what we can, what we're gonna be going through. In this case, this is gonna be one house, single-family, on the five-plus acres of land. We don't know where the house is gonna be built, but it will be built in accordance with zoning setback requirements. I know there was a butter hill last time, who talked about privacy. I would imagine they're gonna put this house somewhere in the middle of this lot, and they're gonna push it to fifteen-foot setbacks in somebody else's backyard. But the stone walls, the rastam interior stone walls, we didn't locate all of them. We did locate the stone walls that go around the perimeter of the property, and those are shown on the plan. But rather than go out there and locate every tree over eight inches on diameter for a project, we were really not building a road, you know, turnarounds and things like that, we were asking for a waiver. So that was a letter that I just submitted today, asking for that one additional waiver on locating the trees and outcrops. There's not really any large outcrops out there, there are a couple of boulders that are kinda sitting on the ground out here, but other than that, no light ledge outcrops. So that was, that was what was added. Item number J is a, where it talks about the topography, it wasn't shown, but they did indicate that that was a waiver request, and for the same reason, when we did the subdivision, we had the topographic survey of the site with proposed grading for the roadways, now there's no road, so the topography is gonna stay like it is now, once the house gets built out there. So I asked for that waiver earlier.
When you're, when you're saying you're asking for these waivers, you ask the, you asking us, or you, you ask zoning?
The board, the board, yeah.
This plan, yeah, got it.
Because these are subdivision waivers, planning ones. So they, I referenced, when I initially turned in the letter, on the waiver request, I referenced the sections and paragraphs for the waivers.
For the zoning.
And that, that's what they responded to, those, those requests.
Okay, sorry, continue.
And I think that's why they, um, all the waivers, they just put not determined yet, because I, I don't know if they're gonna make that call.
Okay.
I think if they were, if they had a concern with any of the waivers, I would've hoped that they would've let the board know that, you know?
Got it, okay. Alright, so...
That was, that was on page four, that's starting with letter O. And that was the, oh, that was, that was concerning easements. So I, in my response letter for O, I stated that there are no existing or proposed easements within the subdivision. Item number P is a waiver, again, it says, uh, they called it not applicable, because there are no streets being proposed, and that we did ask for a waiver on that. Same thing with item number Q, they call that not applicable, and for the same reason, no street being proposed, and that we did ask for the waiver. When you go to page five, same thing, for number R, not applicable, no street being proposed, because a lot of this has to do with an actual subdivision, where a road, drainage, everything else, lighting, everything is being proposed, none of that is taking place on this project. So they gave it the same comment, that it was not applicable. Item number T, they asked for two bench, it says, two benchmarks have not been established within the subdivision. And again, normally that's done when we do do a subdivision, in this case, we're not changing any existing grading, I didn't even have any grading on the initial plan, so without grading, there's really no need to put a benchmark on the plan. But we do have site benchmarks there, so I did put two. One is a, is a PK nail that's set in Old Williams Street, right in front of the property, so I gave the elevation of that. And then there's an existing well on the property near the existing dwelling, so I put that, I have a benchmark on top of that well also, so I do have two site benchmarks now. Item number W, it says, test pit locations and logs have not been provided, the, uh, and I didn't turn them into this board, they have been on file with the Board of Health for years, but I did give a copy to Kerry, it's fairly thick, but when this was a five-lot subdivision, with the house, yeah, with the house, we ended up doing ten perk tests out here, ten soil evaluations, and then we also did perks and soil evaluations for the existing house. So for somebody to come in here and build a single-family house on that lot, of the ten perk tests, it all passed, they really only need two now for new construction. So they've got plenty, but that's, those are on file now with the Board of Health also.
Okay. Let's move on to the Board of Health?
Yeah, the Board of Health has that, and, uh, now the board, now you guys have it also. Okay, so on page six, number X, letter X, it says, uh, subdivided lot was not created the public water system, well exists on parcel one, applicant provide description of proposal of the provisions being made to fight fire protection. On this site, when we did the subdivision for Cortlandt Road, we brought the water main to that site with the expectation of extending it down Old Williams, but we can't do that right now because of the moratorium. But the hydrant was installed at the northwest corner of the intersection of Cortlandt Road and Old Williams, which you can see on the plan. So that hydrant is about two hundred fifty feet from the property. So that falls within the radius that the fire department looks for to supply water to a site. That hydrant will pretty much handle all of the dwellings on Old Williams Street. So that's how, that's how that would take place. Letter Y, a waiver from erosion and dust control, for the same reason, we're not constructing a road, stormwater system or anything, it's gonna be just a driveway in a house, so... And if they, if it's required, like if they do, once that's submitted, if they have to deal with stormwater management, because they're disturbing over a certain amount of square footage, I think it's thirty-five thousand square feet of land, to put their house in, then they'll still have to deal with erosion controls, the building permit process for the house. Now, the double A letter is, uh, they also said that was not applicable, again, because no roadways or utilities or anything are being proposed. Number C, it says, they, they're looking for a topographic map, which they said wasn't included. They had the topo map on the plan itself, but that's small, so what I did provide as part of the package is a regular USGS map, which shows the contouring on the map. I've got an outline of this piece of property on Old Williams Street. This piece of property, you can see from the contours, that this portion of Old Williams Street is about the highest, is definitely is the highest portion of Old Williams Street. Everything drains towards Lewis, or towards Williams Street. And even as you go into this property, it gradually slopes towards the back, where we had the detention basin constructed for John Street off of Cortlandt Way. And you can see that also from the contours that I put on the roadway, that this is the highest point, so... So I don't believe there'll be an issue with, uh...
Oh, there it is.
With that. So number D, D D, letter D D, it says not applicable, for the same reason, they gave a subdivision road is not proposed, and we asked for a waiver on that.
D D, hang on one second, let me get that. Profile.
Yeah, plan and profile of the road, so, because we're not constructing a road, and we're not proposing to change the existing profile of Old Williams Street.
Okay.
On page seven, is, letter B is similar to the previous one, where they asked for the logs of the test pits, so it's the same response, I did submit those now.
Got it.
So you have those. Then on D, letter D, it's, talks about drainage calculations, things of that nature. We asked for a waiver on that again, because we're not constructing a road, so we're not increasing the stormwater runoff from the site, from what's there. So they said the same thing, we're not, we're not proposing the drainage system, so we asked for the waiver on that. On page eight, down at the bottom, C, they just made a comment, it says, no new building is proposed at this time, however, in accordance with the variance that was granted, the single-family dwelling placed on parcel two has to meet zoning setbacks, and we agreed to that. So I just, my response was yes, that's, that was agreed to. D, they asked us to show the setback of the existing dwelling to the new lot line to the right, or to the east, that would be like the side setback. The town requires fifteen feet, and we're at about fifty-four feet from the property line, so it exceeds the fifteen feet. I do have a little table on the bottom, showing the zoning requirements. The next page, E is similar, except they wanted me to show the rear setback of the existing building to the new property line on parcel two. The setback required in Dyke Inn is fifteen feet, and we've got eighty-five feet to the rear, so we exceed that. F talks about coverage, maximum lot coverage, and that's for the existing dwelling. The new lot, when that is developed, will ha, have to meet the coverage, and I'm sure with a five-acre piece of property, it'll be well under the twenty-five percent. On this lot, I put down the square footage of the house, fifteen forty-one square feet. The lot is forty-three thousand seven hundred fifty-five, so again, that's well under twenty-five. If Orojo was here, I'd still have, I'd have him run the calculations on that, like he did at the last meeting.
You don't wanna do math on your feet? It never works out.
Yeah, fifteen hundred versus almost an acre, we're well under the twenty-five percent coverage. We have to be over ten thousand, we have to be eleven thousand square feet on the house.
Yeah, you're, you're well below that. Two and a half percent roughly.
Yep. And then, uh, the last three items on that page that they commented on was H, I, and J, and all of those are maximum building heights, and that's for the proposed building, but there is none, but again, we have to meet zoning.
Right.
So they just put N A, or I just put N A for those items.
Got it, okay.
And I think that's it for the comments, everything else was a yes, that it met the requirements for everything that we didn't ask for.
And I remember there being an initial list, I know that this was the, uh, peer review, going through all these, but I remember there being an initial list that had one big list of all the requested waivers, going back here.
Yeah, I had one list with all of them, and then I just, this letter just had one more.
Yep, yeah, so if we go back to, it's dated October twenty-sixth, um, it's further up in your package, gentlemen.
Yes.
Has a whole list there, uh, it's one through six. It's broken, there's more on that list in the back, 'cause it's broken up into individual letters. But my, my initial thought, when I looked at this, and I talked to Kerry, I said, why aren't we doing a retreat lot? 'Cause it seems like we kinda fit.
I didn't have the eight acres.
Didn't have the eight acres.
I talked to Aggie, I asked him what way the town would rather see, and between talking to him, he felt that this was the better way to present it to zoning.
Right, so they, they went...
To waive frontage rather than waive area.
Right, so what they did was, uh, instead of going to retreat lot... Right, so what they did was, instead of going the retreat lot route, the decision was made to go this route. Going this route, you got to waive a bunch of stuff. That's, that's what's presented here in front of us. And that's why it looks this way. The difference here is, this has gone through zoning, and they've, they've approved it there.
There's a deed restriction, sir?
There, there is a deed restriction, or there will be a deed restriction. That's stated, I believe that was in one of their resp, one of the decisions from the zoning law. Yeah, it says, item number one, no more than one single-family dwelling shall be located on each parcel.
So, it'll never be further subdivided?
Yeah, it's right here, the decisions.
Okay.
Yeah, it's right, it's right on there. So, it says, no more than one single-family dwelling shall be located on parcels one and two. Parcel two shall not be further subdivided. The following notes shall be placed on the plan, which is those two just mentioned. And at the, zoom in a little bit. At the time of filing the Form A plan to the Planning Board for endorsement after grant of the variance, applicant shall also provide a covenant in the form acceptable to the Planning Board and the Zoning Board of Appeals prohibiting for the division of parcel two. So, reiterates it in map twenty-one, so. Parcel two shall comply with Titan zoning bylaws and subdivision rules and regs, except as allowed by this variance. Okay. Thank you for going through those. Appreciate that. Anything further you'd like to cover this evening?
What's that? I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
Any, anything further you'd like to present this evening?
No, I think I'm going to say it.
I don't see anybody here, anybody in the audience has any questions or concerns on this project? Yes, sir?
Actually, I do, in the guy's to wait here instead of water district meeting. The guy in the water district had expressed some concerns. Those issues been addressed in depth. The guy is still water tired because of the moratorium.
Well, what were the concerns? We can't put a water main in.
You can't.
We can't, no. They won't let us, otherwise we would have went back to the subdivision. Because of the moratorium, we can't install one main or get water to the site until the moratorium is lifted.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else?
No.
Okay. So, we have to close the public hearing?
Not yet.
Not yet, ma'am?
First, you need to make a motion to accept his waivers. And then make your motion to, if you're planning on approving or not approving tonight.
Yep. Okay. All right, at this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the waivers put before the Planning Board as, as listed here, and that's presented by the applicant.
I'll make that motion.
Motion made, is there a second?
A second.
Hey, motion made and seconded. Any discussion, further discussion on this before we take a two vote?
I really don't have any issues, because it is not a subdivision. There's no reason to go through all of that. So, I, I really have no issues with it at this point.
I'm glad that he talked to Mr. Aguirre, and they decided this is the route they wanted to go. So, it's due diligence on their part to figure out if there's another way of doing this.
Yeah.
So, I'm glad that they did it this way, and everybody's in agreement, that's what we're going with, so.
It's much less detrimental than even a five-lot subdivision would have been on there. So, I, I think it's a win-win for the town.
Okay.
I, I will say, there was just one other waivers that I wasn't crazy about. It was the mediation of the dust of the road. And I'm only saying this because there's a project going on right now down on Williams Street, way down by Schott's Lot Road. And I'm not sure what they're putting in there, but the, the trucks are in and out, in and out. And there's a lot of dirt and dust in the roadway, right on, on Williams Street.
Okay.
So, you know, did you see that, Joe? It was, it was pretty bad the other day, too. I, I, you know, I travel that road a lot.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
They're really not going to be doing much on the road itself.
They're going to be, well, be building a driveway, putting a driveway in.
But you'd be in and out, like these people, they're building a driveway, too. It looks like they're building a house, but...
Yes, I wouldn't have a problem if you want to give it a condition for the erosion control at, when the construction of the driveway goes in.
Just to be aware, I would like to make your condition on the roadway, that the contractor just be aware, and if there's a problem, to take immediate action.
Do we have to have a separate motion for that, or is that a condition of the existing?
You can make it a condition on the existing waiver.
Okay. Okay, so we'd like to, we have to vote on that?
Now that we've done the discussion, yeah.
Okay. These guys here, is there any discussion on this?
No, that was kind of a thing that stuck out to me, but...
Thanks for bringing that up, please.
Yeah.
All right, so I, I would like to entertain a motion to add a condition to the waiver for the roadway erosion, and that was, hang on, not roadway erosion. Let me read the actual words as stated here. Your lines, too far. See it first, yell it out.
That, Y?
That was Y, yeah.
That was Y, okay.
Y on the, um, response.
There it is. Entertainer motion to put a condition on letter Y of the letter here, an erosion and dust control plan, that, that would be, it would be some kind of a, some control put in place during construction of driveway or the home. Is that about right?
Yes.
Okay.
The driveway, the home is going to be way up.
Yeah, it's going to be way up, so the, of the driveway.
Yeah, we're just concerned about the road that the other cars have to travel on, you know?
Okay, so erosion and, entertain a motion that, for letter Y, for an erosion and dust control plan during construction of the driveway.
Thank you.
I'll make that motion.
Motion made.
Thank you.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion before we take that one to a vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, so that's the condition.
Now, we're back to the original.
Now, we have to back to all the, all the other waivers. So, that other motion is, and second is still on the floor, to approve them, approve all the remainder of the waivers, as is, not any further discussion. I think we've run that out, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that's five ayes. And finally, like to make a motion to approve the, uh, definitive site plan, subdivision site plan for sixteen twenty-four Old Williams Street, map twenty-one, lot thirty-two dash one.
I think I motioned.
Motion made and seconded.
Seconded.
Any, any further discussion before we take a two vote? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And finally, we need to entertain a motion to close the public hearing for sixteen twenty-four Old Williams Street, map twenty-one, lot thirty-two dash one.
I'll make that motion.
Second. Second, motion made and seconded. I think Mr. Higgins won that one.
He was nice and loud on that one.
I know, he was, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's five ayes.
Okay, thank you.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Make a motion to adjourn, is that what you want to?
Now, we've got two minutes, girl.
Oh, not yet. So, I'll write up the decision, have legal looking over, and then I'll get it timestamped, and I'll send you a copy, so you'll know when the twenty-day period is over, and we'll be in touch. Take care.
Thank you, good night, Merry Christmas. All right, uh, next item is approval of meeting minutes for November sixteen, twenty-twenty-two. Does anyone like to make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, excellent.
Who seconded that, I'm sorry?
Me.
Mr. Kuniya. Uh, this is Easter Day, is there any correspondence for us this evening?
No.
Is there any public input, input?
Just one question. That order of condition that you placed on that of dust, will Jimmy Aguirre get a copy of that, so that it is brought to his attention? Then, he doesn't have to go research, when was this approved and provided with dust?
Right, that's a good point, yeah. So, it'll be in the decision, but...
I honestly don't see that to be an issue in any way, because it's just a driveway. Those get put all over the, the state daily, and you don't see much dust.
You should see the mess on Williams Street right now.
I understand, maybe they cut the road.
It's one house.
So, Mr. Aguirre always gets a copy of the findings and decisions.
Well, they have to bring the water stuff in.
Yes, he'll get a copy of it.
Okay.
Once it's approved.
Well, you're trapped there, oh, my goodness.
Yes, have to. Are you talking about the Milk Street?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, sorry, you were here for that?
Yes.
Apologies, I didn't know.
Yes.
That's okay, I've got a couple library books to read.
Oh, yeah.
Before you leave, though, Mr. Selectman Higgins, we need to determine when...
Mr. Higgins, I haven't seen a recital yet.
My apologies.
Thanks for the motion.
I know, right? No, 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 no. I was told that they were going to come in tomorrow to make that outstanding balance whole, so that they can move forward on the matter. And they ask to be placed on their next, on your next agenda. Our next agenda, and I did give them a heads up.
It's very full.
Um, you have Forest Hills, you have the Wellington Acres H O A issue.
Okay.
Um, we have Center Street Woods, who's asking for a waiver with the bounds, something with the bounds.
Okay.
Um, we have a potential with Clearway Solar, which I thought they were going to be here tonight, but apparently...
I thought so, too, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, and then we have a public input, input with, excuse me, Evan Watson, who's an engineer. He actually did the Hunter's Hill.
Okay.
With a proposal for a property on Williams Street. So, my question to you is, do you want me to put them on the January fourth, or do you want me to push them to the January?
I think the eighteenth would be better.
Okay, that was my thought, and I did give them a warning, so...
I, I don't, I think that's too much for the fourth.
Okay.
Thanks for the heads up, though.
Especially if Forest Hills comes in.
If they come in, yes.
Yeah, they have not consistently do it.
That's, that should be done by, all by itself.
Yeah.
Joe, do you want these plans back for the Milk Street project, so you can put them in on the next packet?
If you're so inclined.
Because I could possibly lose them.
I would love to save trees, yes.
I could lose those very easily.
You're supposed to be saving your packets.
I don't save them. They're good fire starters.
Are there any, any additional public input, input, input?
No.
All right, somebody like to make a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Two people made a motion, would they like to second it?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Meeting adjourned. Good night, YouTube cable.